First on the agenda will be the pledge led by Ms. Tower, Pilgrim tonight. All right, let's see. Anything on the agenda? Anybody wants to change? What about the consent agenda?
We intend to start before five. Are we intending to start before five o'clock?
Yeah, that was Chairman's mistake.
Okay, all right, okay. Just making sure.
Were you, were you here?
I was there.
That early?
Well, I didn't know Ms. Sharp, she's not here yet, so.
Oh, okay. Well.
Should we wait, Mr. Reed?
We're supposed to wait till five o'clock, but, but.
Well, we can wait.
I'm sorry.
We'll just take a break. Can't get away with anything.
I'm as eager as anyone to start, but if Ms. Sharp's coming, we probably need to wait.
All right, we can go back to work now. Y'all got your Chairman slowed down a little bit. Okay, was there any questions or anything on the consent agenda? Or the agenda while we're doing it? All right, we'll move on to, I guess, number eight. There, Mr. Spurlock, signing bonuses?
Yeah, signing bonus incentive for hard to staff subject areas. The signing bonus incentive for hard to staff areas are submitted to the state each year, and it's presented to the board for approval. As you look at the tab there on Tab Two, you'll notice that it includes our math, science, and our world languages, and also ESL. And we're also adding in this year for our student teachers, if you'll look at the bottom, for our student teachers, we're looking at those student teachers that come in and do their student teaching in our system, providing them with a thousand dollar bonus to sign with us if they sign by, what was the date?
April first.
April first. They get 500 the first semester, 500 the second semester. We kind of picked this up from some information when we were working with MTSU.
Right. Running districts are doing that to entice people to student teach and stay in their district.
One of the things we also like to do, and I talked to Dr. Anthony, she's been doing a great job, was looking at our return on investment. So I'm going to have her give you some, some stats that she has since, I don't think it's since we've had the program, but since you took over.
Yes, I have stats that I've been keeping for the past three years in this position of our signing bonuses. And each year we have increased 15 percent, has been an increasing rate of people signing in our signing bonuses. And again, we're able to retain them. And what's exciting, not only with our recruitment and retainment, is our training and what it is provided for us. We have currently, from just those three years alone, with two years of data with those teachers, we have a 52 percent increase of teachers where their level of effectiveness moving up one level. So if they were four in one year's time, they'd move it to a level of five. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for growth and attainment, not only for our students, but also for our teachers. And for the other percentages, we have been able to show incremental growth by, you know, a tenth of a percent, a two-tenth of a percent, those kind of things, just to show that we are making progress out of the teachers that we have. The majority of our signing bonuses are for ESL, and the advantage of that also is fortunately with our neighboring district of Metro, we've been able to take, on average, 14 of their ESL teachers a year after they've paid to train them and add that certification, and then have their experience now, and being able to retain them, and them performing at a high level, all at fives for both, you know, the previous years. So that's, that's an exciting point. And usually also, I don't know if you know the national statistics, but for the state of Tennessee, there's annually one person that graduates from the universities with a physics certification. And the past two years, we've been able to do a signing bonus, one for each of those years. So that's exciting. Also, our world language has been pretty much dedicated to Spanish. We've been able to do some great signing bonuses with Spanish, chemistry, as well as Mr. Spurlock mentioned, math as well for six 12. So we're really excited to see the growth, not only for our students, but also for our teachers and the training and the essential PD that we're offering as a district.
What's our percentage of retention at least?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent? We'll take that one.
Absolutely. We're excited this year also. We've been doing a lot of job fairs. I did a first virtual job fair from Wisconsin today, and the diversity, that was really great there. And we have two other people in my department that have attended job fairs elsewhere in Tennessee today. So, you know, we're going out there, we're hitting 10 different states right now and getting many people to apply immediately. So we're getting them to come in and hoping to continue with this trend of training them, getting them additional signing bonuses.
All right. Good information. Number nine.
All right, number nine is the Advantage XPO Renewal Agreement found on Tab Three. I know we sent out the February attendance rates for the schools, I think I sent that out earlier this week. Some of the things I want to call your attention to on, on that report, that also included vacancies. And what I mean is a, a class without a teacher that had to be filled by subs. So it does inflate some of those, those absenteeisms there. It also includes those who are on leave, whether it be maternity leave or whatever, sick leave. And it also includes some training. I don't know that we had a lot of training during that time, but it would include that, but that did not. Rutherford County Schools currently contracts with Advantage XPO for substitute teacher services. Advantage XPO will maintain their current bill rate and contract for the 2020-21 school year.
Any questions? Okay, number 10.
Number 10 is the Todd Nezloni Contract with Kitterell Elementary School, found on Tab Four. Presenter Todd Nezloni will lead professional development on his book, Kids Deserve It: Pushing Boundaries and Challenging Conventional Thinking. And this will be done at Kitterell School on June the 15th of 2020. The training will include topics such as teaching the whole child in a safe and healthy learning environment, making an impact in lives of our students, and strategies for innovative instruction to raise achievement in all students. The cost will not exceed $7,500, and this includes all travel fees for the presenter. Kitterell's Title I funds will pay 100 percent of the cost for this training.
That's a one-day training.
That's right.
Any questions? Move right along here. Number 11.
All right, number 11 is Curriculum Instruction. The Curriculum Instruction CTE Department would like to allocate approximately $13,010 of Perkins 2019-2020 funds to support Rutherford Works Ambassador Leads at 22 of our middle and high schools. The purpose of this, Rutherford County Works Ambassador Leads, will be to develop instructional capacity of our teachers, our counselors, and assistant principals within our district to support Rutherford Works partnership. The leads will be responsible for attending in-person meetings and implementing the following opportunities at their schools: Work ethic distinction, use science, work-based learning, industry tours, Jump Start Job Fair, Eighth Grade Career Pathway Fair, and the ACT Work Keys Assessments. The allocations are, each participant receives $500 stipend for attendance, participation in professional development sessions led by the Rutherford Works and the CTE Curriculum and Instruction Department. You can see those ambassadors there, all the way from Blackman High School down to Central Magnet. And Ms. Pilgrim, is anything you want to add to that on the ambassadors? How were they chosen? I guess that'd be a good question. Do you?
The principals were able to choose who they wanted, and, you know, based on leadership that they have in their school and things that they have already done. And so this has really been, you know, a great initiative to help to have the Rutherford Works ambassador person as kind of like the lead for all of our work. So it's been really successful.
I think I recall a phone call, maybe last spring or summer, that I was part of. Do you recall that?
With the Rutherford Works ambassadors?
Uh, and we came up with this idea.
Yes, I believe it was actually, you coined Rutherford Works ambassadors yourself.
Well, I think what happened is we were, they felt like we were kind of shortchanging them a little bit. And I think from what I've heard of the feedback that I've gotten, you can correct me, they've, they've really enjoyed having this.
Yes, it has, it has truly made a difference in the work that we've been able to get finished because, you know, before, they were always having to go through me, or Brian, or Rebecca, or Rosalyn. And it, it just kind of, there was a, we just needed help. And so by having that person in each of the schools, they can also help each other. And then our friends with, at the Rutherford Works, with the chamber, they have a point person to go to as well. And so it has been very beneficial, so much so that I'm going to put it in our federal plan for next year as well, to, to be able to do that because of the amount of work that they do and how smooth it's really been for our students. We're very excited about that. Thank you.
We appreciate your input.
Any questions on that? Okay, number 12.
Our number 12 is our instructional materials on the state-approved list, Criminal Justice, Criminal Justice II, Culinary Arts IV, Culinary Arts III, the titles of the textbook and the publishers. The instructional material not on the state-approved list is Criminal Justice III, Culinary Arts I, Culinary Arts II, Pre-Law I, Pre-Law II, and III. There's no state-approved text on the adoption list for these courses. These courses had no resources submitted for the initial Section B committee review that took place during the summer of 2019. The local CTE Section E Instructional Materials Committee requested and reviewed the materials above and determined that they were, met, will meet the requirements set forth by the LEA Instructional Materials Waiver Instrument, thus allowing them to be used for CTE courses.
Any questions? All right, let's move on. Curriculum Instruction, number 13.
These were summer camps that had been held in our schools already. However, they were through Rutherford Works, is that what it was? And now we've, we're taking over our teachers, our facilities. And as you can see there, I think the price is to pay for, not only for the instructors, but also for materials, things of that nature. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's for like the robots and the coding stuff, and the T-shirts and all the stuff. And the Discovery Center is going to be helping to facilitate that, of course.
So you can see on June the 8th through the 12th, the theme, they are the droids you are looking for. This will be held at Stewart's Creek Middle, age group six through ninth grade, capacity approximately 20, that's the max. We probably don't get that many. And the charge per, price per camper. And then on the 8th through 12th, Cyber Ambassador Boot Camp will be held at Stewart's Creek High School, grades nine through 12. The allocated amount of campers, 25. June the 15th through 19th, Makers Coding Lab at Barfield, approximately 20 campers, the price there and the instructors. June 15th through 19th, Code Like a Girl, Rocky Fork Middle, the price there. June 15th through 19th, these are the droids you are looking for, bringing back, Stewart's Creek Middle, 20 campers. And July 13th through 17th, Making, the Makers Coding Lab 2.0 at Barfield, approximately 20 campers. Primary, how many, do you normally, did all those fill?
Most all of them did fill. The one that they were having the most problem with is the Code Like a Girl. And so they're going to really focus their marketing on that this year to try to get those filled up.
Maybe change the name a little bit.
I know, I know. We have to revisit that next time.
14.
All right, 14 is textbook adoption, found on Tab Five. School systems are required to submit textbook adoptions annually on forms provided by the Tennessee State Department of Education. The elementary, middle, and high school textbook committees are recommending the purchase of the English Language Arts Textbooks listed below for using in beginning in the 2020-2021 school year through the 2025-2026 school year, starting with English Language Arts K5. The choice, the predominant choice there was our expeditionary learning. The publishers opened up. Is there anything you want to say on that one there, Dr. Sullivan?
When we were looking at that one, our committee voted 29 to 7 to recommend that. That is something that textbook companies are really looking at doing a little bit different. Our, when we think about textbooks, I mentioned several weeks ago, they used to have a digital price and a print price. And now textbook companies have really separated that into two separate things. For equity issues, that's something we feel like we need to provide all of our students, that written text, but also the, the online component as well.
All right, the next one is ELA 6 through 8. The choice of the committee was Amplify ELA. Dr. Sullivan, you want to mention, talk on that one a bit?
Let me give you the vote total on that one real quick. That one was nine to one. And so one thing to mention is Amplify ELA was, I mentioned this several weeks ago, is the parent company. They started as a 6-8 company. They then bought a portion for K5 that was CKLA that they purchased from another portion to pick up, but they are their own separate 6-8 program that they developed. That's what they originally were. And they voted nine to one for that one.
Okay, the next one is ELA 912, My Perspectives, publisher's Pearson.
Similar, we had several vendors that we looked at. High school did not unfortunately get as much attention as elementary and middle school did for textbook adoptions. There weren't as many options, but our committee voted, on that one real quick, was 10 to one. So overall, pretty, pretty unanimous decisions are, were from our committees.
And then the, the next is Creative Variety, four genres in brief, third edition by Bedford. What was the vote total on that one?
Same thing. Those were concluded with the 912 adoption.
Okay. And then you got AP Seminar, The World of Ideas, Essential Readings for College Writers, Bedford. AP Language, The Language Composition, third edition from Bedford. AP Literature, Literature and Composition, the second edition from Bedford.
Any questions on that? Okay, number 15.
All right, number 15. We got Rutherford County Schools, JRTC, Distinguished Leader Graduate Award. I think we have two gentlemen right here. You can kind of tell us a little bit about this.
Thank you, sir, and board members. I'm Colonel Housens. I'll be retiring at the end of this school year, 30 June, effective 30 June. And I felt it, I felt that we need to do something special within the junior ROTC community because we fall under CTE. And what we've come up with is the Distinguished Leader Graduate Award. And I'll let Colonel Richter, who will be taking my place, who's currently at Oakland High School, Senior Army Instructor, and he'll provide you the details regarding this. This will be my last hurrah. It's been a pleasure.
Yes, sir. School Board, Mr. Spurlock, ladies and gentlemen, what we would like to propose is a Distinguished Leader Graduate Award, much like we give valedictory awards at each of the schools. The ROTC program is primarily a leadership and a character development program. And when we teach our kids about leadership, there are three main components that we want to develop in every one of them. And leaders are necessary everywhere. Folks that inspire people to want to get good and do well, that want to follow people, who lead exclusively by example. And we've got three components that we try to inspire in each one of them. First order of business is they've got to be intellectually smart. They've got to be aware of their surroundings. They've got to be able to problem solve, and they need to do well academically. That's the purpose of high school, is to graduate with the highest grades possible in the hardest classes you're capable of taking, and that varies between person to person. The second component is we want them to be emotionally mature and stable, not get caught up in drama, to, to be well-grounded. And the third component to develop in leaders is we want them to be physically tough. They have to have the endurance to be able to withstand long nights, to hard work. And so we have come up with a set of criteria, and this has the consensus of all the senior army instructors. Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Martin sat in a meeting with us where we discussed the criteria for this. And I think as we go through this, you're going to find this is not something that many, many people are going to be able to get. And we want to make it hard. You have to have completed four years of ROTC. Most kids that do four years of ROTC, they are in the last 20 percent of the kids that start the programs. It is a voluntary program, nobody has to do it. They have to commit, or conclude, or compete, or complete at least 12 hours of community service. Most of them are closer to the areas of about 100 hours of community service in a year. They can't have gotten in any kind of trouble, OSS or ISS, for the last three years. We're giving them a little bit of a break. If they screw up their freshman year, we want them to learn from their mistakes, and many of them are going to make those mistakes. They have to have at least a 3.5 GPA in all of their classes and a 4.0 GPA in their ROTC classes. They have to have gotten at least a 22 on their ACT. Additionally, they have to hold the rank of captain or higher in most programs. That's going to be maybe seven kids total that are eligible. And they have to go through promotion interviews, job interviews, to be able to compete for these positions and get them. Additionally, they have to have competed in one or more of our extracurricular teams for at least the last three years, and they have to have been the captain of the team in either their junior or their senior year. They have to have gone to our summer leadership camp, and then they also have to be eligible to get the National Fitness Award. In most programs, this is going to be anywhere from zero to maybe three or four if you've got a really good year. I started with 176 kids in my program this year. I've got two kids that meet this criteria. Both of them are well on the high end of these kind of things. They've got 4.0s, they've got 3.9s, they had 28ths on their ACTs. They've been to summer camp, they have been multiple team captains, and they're going to college in most cases on full-ride scholarships. These are the kids that we want to try to inspire and create the example for other kids to follow. They want to be like them. In fact, when we talk to our freshmen, most of them say, "I remember the seniors that I had, and I wanted to be just like them." And those are the kind of inspirations that we're trying to create by creating an award like this. We'd like to have a certificate, a diploma seal, and an award that is a sash or a cord that they can wear during their graduation. It'd be a piece of resume material for them later on down the line. But I think the impact is also going to be on the rest of the kids in the schools and in the ROTC programs, to inspire them to excellence. That's kind of what we do with our valedictory programs. And I would propose that you would accept this award. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Colonel, I want to congratulate you on your promotion.
I don't know if that's congratulations. A lot more work. But thank you very much, sir.
We do appreciate you, Colonel.
And Mr. Housen?
Same here.
We want to thank you for your years of military service and the many years you put in here in Rutherford County.
I'd be 24 years and we've got eight high schools. I started with four and a half. We started with seven and a half. And I appreciate the support of this board. And we're really blessed within the junior ROTC community of Rutherford County with the support we've received from the principals and the administrators and the parents. So, and we hope that we've done our duty.
Thank you. You know, a lot of people don't realize that ROTC has one of the best ACT scores in the county. And they take a lot of young men and young women that, that struggle, that start, and make very productive citizens out of them. And we want to thank both of you for that. Okay, 16.
All right, number 16, we want to kind of prize you of our initiative that we'd like to pursue, with the RCS Virtual School. What we, what we do have currently is we have a self, I guess would be a self-created online school that we use primarily for à la carte, taking different classes during the year, but also in the summer, repeating classes or taking classes for new credit that we charge. One of the things, when, when I went to, well, one of the things we did early in the year, and one of the goals on the Director of Schools' goal was to develop and implement a virtual K-12 school. I went to this conference, and in this conference, it was being discussed, and the question was asked, "Are y'all going to create your own curriculum?" And I said, "Well, that's, that's a pretty large task for us to do that." So anyway, I met with Pearson, talked to them, and in this discussion, I started thinking about, "How can we make this work for Rutherford County?" Well, one of the things I requested is, "Tell me how many homeschoolers do we have?" And we have, I think as of today, 1,670 homeschoolers. Now, those homeschoolers are there for various reasons. We're not naive to know that there's different reasons for each one. But we don't get any funding for those 1,670. So as I was looking at this, and I had Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Martin meet with the, with the company, talk to them, and then also I sent them to Robertson County. Robertson County is starting this. In fact, actually, they already got it in place. And lo and behold, guess who's some of our homeschoolers they have? Ours. Okay, so they're getting the, our ADM on those kids that they have, and also getting from some other surrounding counties. All right, so what we're wanting to do, and we want to do this with fidelity, we're going to, we're going to create a full K-12 online virtual school. We can, if we recruit 25 percent of our homeschoolers, just 25 percent of that 1,670, not only we could pay for the program, we could actually, you know, get, make money off of that. Currently, I think the state, our, our portion of the state, BEP, portion of our average daily membership is a little over $5,000. Is that right, Doug? $5,015. So if we could recruit 25 percent of that, we would not only pay for the program, but we'd also make money on that. Now, initially, we're probably looking at a 75 maybe to 100, okay? And maybe grow as we go along. I think this is, this is something that, you know, this is not unique. I'd like to tell you this is just real unique, and we're innovative. We're not, we're way behind. Most of your schools our size have had, districts our size have had this for a long time. I think this provides another tool in our toolkit to provide our students with things that they need. I do think that we're getting in that time, a day and age where some kids cannot function in a regular school setting. And I think this can be used in a variety of different ways. I think it can be a start of something that can be very beneficial to our students and give them options. We could do, we would still do the à la carte, the, the funding for, we do charge, I think currently we charge, is it, is it two, is it $200 a course à la carte for, online for here? But with, with the amount that we would make off of this, we would, we wouldn't have to raise that price at all. In fact, we may even eliminate that price. A lot of it's predicated on how many homeschoolers we can, can bring back in. So this is something we're going to be bringing back later on as we work through the, the parts of it and requesting that you approve this going forward.
Question. How much is the full program, Dr. Sullivan? Do you have a price on the?
Yeah, full, 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 full course, if a kid took eight classes a year, I think it's up to eight classes a year, it's like $4,200, $4,200. Yeah, that's, that's less than our, what we get off of them on ADM.
And just to kind of give you an example, so we went and met with Robertson County. Robertson County has had their own for about seven years. They actually opened it up, K-12 to other districts across the state, which is where our students ended up there. And they have gone from zero to 1,400 enrollment in six months. Now, obviously, that's not where we would want to take it, but they are, it goes from cost prohibitive to very much cost advantageous in that type of situation.
And I think that's where we are. We, we don't want to make money. I mean, we don't lose money. We want to break even if we can, and we want to do it with fidelity. I don't know that you can do it with fidelity with, because that's a lot of kids now. But I do know, talking to some of the other superintendents throughout the United States that were at that conference, they did it, and they thought it was fabulous. States that were at that conference, they did it, and they thought it was fabulous. I mean, they was, they was having some great results with it.
I think it's a great idea. I have several friends that are homeschoolers, and the problem that they have with public schools is the curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, Pearson is not a favorite among, you know, most really, uh, true homeschoolers, so that might be something that you wanna think about.
We can craft, if I'm not mistaken, we can craft some of this. I mean, we can...
We can.
I mean, we can do like, I mean, uh, one of the things that we, we always, even with our textbooks, the textbook is not, we, when we develop the instructional guides, we can extract or, or add what we want in our, in our curriculum. Yeah. In fact, that, we do that. I mean, when we go through and do a, a, uh, an analysis of a textbook, there's gonna be some things in there, quite frankly, and, and I'll share with you quite openly. Uh, he brought me something from a K-five textbook, and I said, "No, uh-uh." I said, "We're going from historical to ideology, and we don't do that." And, uh, so we can, we can make those things work.
I think if we can give them a choice, I think it's a great, I think...
Yeah, I think that there's some things we can work with.
In this curriculum, do they, you should talk about study guides, do each student get for that class?
Right, there is, there's an actual platform. If it was, there's different platforms you can use. Pearson's just the one that Robertson County has used, the one we've looked at. It is almost like a student, we're logging in to take a college course, which then is the argument, as we move into post-secondary, they're already preparing for things they're going to see. Uh, and it truly, they have seat hours, so you have a principal over the school. They take, and that would really be the, the cost to the district is the principal perspective of it, because this would operate as its own school, gets its own school number, it gets its own school, uh, state score. So you wanna make sure the program is done with fidelity, because it's going to report back like a normal school would, and so it has to match what the state requirements are.
Now, one of the things, though, we have looked at, uh, repurposing of a position that would, would offset the cost of the, um, of the principal.
Correct.
All right, sounds good. Any questions? Okay, seventeen.
All right, seventeen, we've got three appeals, tabs six, seven, and eight. Uh, the board has been requested to review the decision, this hearing, and hearing authority, uh, DHA to oppose the remandment of the student in Rockville High School. The student, uh, was remanded. The alternative school under board policy six point three one, uh, three. Uh, based on the review of the DHA's, A's, uh, record, the board may do the following. They can affirm decision of DHA, overturn the decision of DHA, modify the decision to a lesser penalty, or for grant a hearing before the board. Uh, this would also include eighteen and nineteen. I don't think there's a, each one involves a remandment.
Okay. Any questions on those? Okay, move on to number twenty, financial.
All right, this is, uh, financial matters, uh, this is a cleanup of some, with two amendments. Um, uh, non-payroll budget amendment within the major expenditure functions in the general purpose school fund. This is a routine cleanup, non-payroll budget amendment within major functions to true-up funds within departments in order to assist with next year's budget preparation, as well as assist with current budget control. Departments that needed additional funds or revenue to balance their expenditure overages within the department budgets were the following. Coordinated school health for the walking track grant expenditure, kinda went over a little bit. Attendance office for the new software, um, Skyward. Uh, transportation department, additional bus camera equipment purchases for installation expenses. And attendance office and transport, uh, transportation office budget overages will be offset by additional lease revenue received. Coordinated health, additional funding will come from grants.
Any question on those? Okay, second one, no, I wrote.
All right, second one is non-payroll budget amendment to move funds between the two major expenditure functions for CTE and to move restricted funds out of the fund balance in the general purpose school fund. This is the second cleanup. It's a non-payroll budget amendment for the CTE program that moves funds between two CTE, CTE, excuse me, major functions, the instructional and support, and non-payroll cleanup, move donated funds from United Way, Jennings Jones Foundation, Smyrna Rotary Club, to budget for expenditures of funds as requested and directed by donors of Smyrna West Alternative School. Staff development for the needy children, uh, uh, needy, needy children clothing and teacher recognition, district-wide spectrum program for the gifted program, staff development, and district-wide needy, uh, district-wide clothing for needy school age children's, uh, children in the attendance office, through the attendance office. With the movement of the funds between the two major expenditure functions, as well as the, as well as out of fund balance, this amendment cannot be on the county commission's consent agenda. Therefore, it is a separate from the first cleanup budget amendment. Doug, is there anything you wanna add on that?
To sum it up, I, I tried to get as much description as possible on that, just not only for the school board, but the, uh, Health and Ed Committee, 'cause, just to make sure that they know, 'cause there is, there's a lot moving around. And basically, what we're doing is, I just wanna do is, as we're going into the budget prep time, one, just to make sure each department sees, okay, well, if you spend over in a non-payroll object code, then, um, and then you have some leftover another, just so they can be aware, no, you, I'm, we're gonna clean your budget up, so you can see, this is what I have left in my budget for the rest of the fiscal year. It also gives them a point to look at it and see where they're at. And, um, then it helps us as we, you know, prepare the budget for next year, to see what's actually spent over the budget that we've got this year, 'cause you wouldn't wanna budget something low next year. So, give a more accurate picture going to the budget.
Thank you. Anybody have a question on that? Okay, third one.
All right, the third was amendments to the fiscal year nineteen twenty, approved Fund One Seventy-Seven, which is Educational Capital Project Fund. This amendment is to move available funds to additional needed capital projects as detailed in the enclosed Capital Project Fund Plan. Additional work includes the following: refinishing two additional school gymnasium floors and needed interior renovations at the Smyrna Teacher Training Center. Mr. Lee, give us, I know you told me, but tell the board when we expect that to open.
We are, uh, basically ready, uh, in the PD center side, but we're waiting on some, the last of our, uh, cubicles for the ESL that's moving down there. Uh, the, I call it the intake center, I don't think Nona likes that nomenclature very much, but it's basically where the parents are coming up here now.
Registrations.
Registration. Where they come up to register for class, and, and they, most of them don't speak English, and, and Nona and her staff do a really great job with that. We have a large number that are, uh, from that end of the county, so they'll be moving into the new PD center, be more convenient for them. The PD center is now gonna be able to seat, it's larger than our training center at the, uh, uh, over here. And basically, what we've done is repurposed what I still call the old Smyrna Library, uh, when I was a kid growing up. That was the public library that the city and the county swapped sometime back, and we've used it for a number of years for Smyrna Middle's library. With the new addition, they were able to move their library back inside, and that building became vacant, uh, and we wanted to be good stewards, and Mr. Spurlock decided that, and we could make a PD center out of it. And, uh, I think, uh, we hopefully in the next probably three or four weeks will send something out through Ms. Michaels to have a grand opening for y'all to come see. I think you'll be very impressed with it, and I think it's gonna be, uh, very beneficial for our teachers and staff, and it's gonna make good use of an existing facility.
I agree with you. I think the, I think you said a hundred and seventy?
Between a hundred and fifty and two hundred.
Two hundred, seven hundred and fifty, two hundred. That's a much larger than what we currently have. And that's been one of our biggest things, when we host some of our outside, uh, districts to come over for PD, I think the supervisors, don't, don't, don't our mid-core supervisors meet over here? It's kinda, uh, limited as far as space is concerned. So I think it's, that's a great idea to have that down there.
Any questions on that? Okay, fourth one.
All right, the fourth one is the twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one E-Rate Tennessee Education Broadband Consortium contracts. We got category one, extension of the T E B C contract, uh, number forty-nine zero zero one to AT&T Corporation to continue providing our internet access and wide area and network services. The district's annual cost for the E-Rate discount of sixty percent is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. Pretty good discount there, isn't it, Mr. Bowden? And category two is, uh, contract forty-nine zero eight-three to Central Technologies Incorporated for fiber, uh, products, installation, and related work equipment for, for twenty-two elementary schools. The district's cost for the E-Rate discount of sixty percent is four hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-four.
Any questions on that? All right. Twenty-one, insurance update. Thank you. Directors update.
Yeah, one of the things I wanna talk about, I think we've, we've heard it, we've talked to our General Assembly, we've talked to many different people about the, uh, mostly, um, challenged, emotionally disturbed kids in early age having issues with behavior. Today, uh, myself and, uh, Ms. Kozabowski and, and some people in her department met with several principals around the, um, district, and we first, we did a lot of listening, and, uh, I think we may have come up with some plans. Now, uh, there's about three different options that, uh, we were, we're looking at, that to, to address some of this, uh, these issues. Um, I, I would like to tell you that they, they're gonna be cheap, but all three options can be expensive. Uh, but I, I'll be honest with you, I think we have to do something, I, I really do. I, I, you know, I think our principals and our teachers are, uh, you know, their hands are, are tied, I don't think they've been trained. And I don't know that, really, to be honest with you, I'm not sure that, um, that we even thought, uh, we could even train them up to the point where they need to be. And, and I think what we need to do is we gotta, we gotta, we gotta measure a lot of analytics when we're making this decision, as far as the cost. We also have some incidental costs that come with it, you know? Uh, one of which is losing teachers. That's a huge cost. We invest in our teachers, and if we lose teachers, another cost is, uh, in, uh, workman's comp. Uh, we know that's, that's been a huge issue. And, uh, and, and we cannot, uh, devalue the impact on the educational process that is or is not taking place in the classroom and which was disrupted. So, uh, I think listening, this is the first part of it, uh, coming up with some viable options. I think when we look at more than one option, I think, uh, you know, that provides a, uh, an opportunity, uh, for some, so solutions, and I'm hoping, uh, that that will occur. Ms. Page, you were in the meeting, what was your takeaway?
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock. I thought it was wonderful. I know our principals sometimes feel isolated and that they are the only ones, but Mr. Spurlock provided good insight from a conference he went to that we're not the only school district. In fact, we're probably amongst all school districts in the country seeing these issues. Our teachers do strive to do the right thing, and they often find themselves between a rock and a hard place, making a choice for one student, trying to comply with the law, while also meeting the needs of the many in their classroom. And so I think the biggest takeaway for me was from Ms. Barnes, and she said, "I sometimes feel like my toolkit, I'm out of tools, and I just would like to have that replenished," basically, and, and I think that's what Mr. Spurlock's suggesting, is thinking of some new tools, so...
Okay. That it? All right. Ms. Johnson, Tennessee legislators.
I'll have something, uh, Thursday.
Okay. Ms. Sharp, federal.
I'll have something Thursday night.
Thank you. General discussion?
Um, I talked to Mr., if I can, Mr. Chairman, I talked with Mr. Estes earlier this week about the, um, resolutions that the ladies brought in at the last school board meeting. We really haven't discussed it, and we don't have to discuss it now, but I'm asking if you guys will look at it again, and then we can discuss it, unless somebody wants to discuss it.
She's talking about discussing what TEA and REA came to us with the other night, uh, about supporting their resolution. Right?
Right. I don't believe that. We spoke about it the night at the school board meeting, so I, I don't know what everybody else's comments are or thoughts or anything, 'cause I, I imagine that this took a lot of time to put together for them, research and things like that, and I, I would like to at least, at some point tonight, or Thursday night, discuss this, or may, maybe make in an agenda item.
I don't, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't support them. Gotta get through the legislators, so...
All right, Martha, and Ms. Sharp, thank you for bringing that up, 'cause I, I've been thinking about that, and we certainly do, I think, have a responsibility to give them, you know, response. And I'm wondering too, 'cause with the legislative season doing what it's doing right now, are they on a deadline to get those done and submitted? In other words, if we as a board, um, do decide that we want to support them and sign off on them, or however we're gonna do that, um, what kinda timeline are we looking at? 'Cause I'm thinking they wanted to present them like next week.
I'm not aware of one, but it's...
Correct, Mr. Spurlock. Yeah, 'cause they're going up to the Hill that day.
Oh, that's right, they're going Monday, Monday, the sixteenth.
Well, let me ask a, or pose a question then, and this may be something Mr. Reed might have to answer for us, but since, I know it's not formally on our agenda, um, would it be possible for us to, to walk away from this meeting saying we're all gonna go back and review their three resolutions and be able to make a decision on Thursday night whether or not we're going to support them? And I'm, I'm not entirely sure what they envisioned, if we're just gonna sign off on it as a board, or if we would do our own. I, I don't really know how that, what that looks like. I don't know, maybe you can help us, Mr. Reed.
I think that's okay, the board is kinda in general consensus to do that for Thursday night. Um, I have not seen the language of the specific resolution, so we probably won't look at that beforehand. Uh, but, um, if you are willing to entertain that, I think it's appropriate to talk about it Thursday night.
Okay. Yeah, I, and obviously, I think it would be a good idea that you looked at them, Mr. Reed, so if there's anything of concern that you can advise us before we take any action on it.
Yeah, I can do that by Thursday night, yes.
Yes, they do.
So I think it's okay, if the board's inclined to add it to the agenda Thursday, it'd be okay to add it.
As Mr. Hodge said, he, they did read it at our last meeting.
Yes, they have.
Publicly, so...
Yes.
I know they gave us paper copies, but we didn't get anything electronically, did we?
I have an electronic copy.
Okay. Mr. Spurlock, any thoughts?
I mean, I agree, I mean, if it, I think, I mean, we need to support our teachers.
I can email this out to everyone again to have them look at it before the meeting on Thursday. Anyone has any comments, they, they can call my office, and we can kinda incorporate those into the resolutions for Thursday. I can work up, uh, either a docteze or a revised version for Thursday night.
Perfect. Thank you. I just didn't want it to go by, go by, and I almost forgot about it until I spoke to Mr. Chairman.
I have two, I have one on funding and one on testing.
That's, there, there was only two.
Okay.
The, the third one was, the third handout was the Monday event.
Ah, okay, okay. Thanks.
All right. I do have one thing, you know, we were talked to about lacrosse, and we didn't take any action on whether to support it, not support it. We've got a little over a year before TWS double A sanctions. Uh, I had a meeting today with Mr. Tackett, and, uh, some of the lacrosse people out of Williamson County are willing to come to Rutherford County and put on a game, uh, so our students can see what it is and see what kinda interest it is in it. Uh, they would also make, before that game, uh, come to a meeting and make a presentation on it to us. I'd just kinda like to know if, if, if the board is interested in it, we can do that. If you're not interested, we won't do it, so... I mean, I, I'm not very good talking about lacrosse, 'cause I don't know anything about it.
Do we, do we know, um, at this point, what it looks like in terms of expense and space and usage and all those good things that would go into starting a new sport, looks like right now?
Well, we got a, a thing on that from Mr. Tackett. Boys soccer is pretty expensive. Now, yeah, it's, it's, you know, lacrosse, uh, it's not as high as football, but that is a much rougher game than the girls' lacrosse. Their equipment would be a whole lot cheaper than what I'm told. So, uh, you know, if you had rather, let me see if they would come in and give us a, uh, presentation sooner. We're talking about in the school... We're talking about in the school to doing this. And, uh, we know there's a little interest in about, what, four high schools?
My thing was on the use of facilities. I mean, you know, we've got two turf fields.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that, you know, that your middle school, all your JV, that, that, and they, they're working well with doing that.
Mm-hmm.
How would that impact, you know, once again, we, we would put, you know, we put another athletic program on a, um, on a field that probably, you know, the, the wear and tear would be very, I mean, that's, that's a big issue right there. I thought that was brought up, too.
It, it was.
Scheduling would be a challenge.
Bill scheduling.
How many studios you talking about? How many?
I have no idea. I mean, you know, uh, anyone know lacrosse?
Well, personally, I don't know, I don't know anything about it, and I'd like, I'd like to hear something.
Well, why don't I get back in touch with Mr. Tackett and ask him to, for them to do a presentation on it? When do we start budget meetings? Yesterday?
I started with Mr. Spurlock, and, um, my hope is, we will, we're work, we're obviously currently working on, on department requests right now and looking through both operating and capital. My hope, my timeline, what I would like, if it's okay with the board, is in the beginning of April to present the cafeteria and the capital projects. Mr. Lee and I are working on that. And then, from that point forward, then work on the operating fund, the general purpose school fund, with the board and different, because that gives me time to also be looking at the revenue side. I just got what a penny, the, the preliminary, what the, what the revenue will come from a sin on the tax levy. Um, and of course, in April, we'll get our BEP estimates from the state. So, and I'm still waiting on, uh, but we hope the next time we meet with the insurance committee, we'll have what the increase of the healthcare insurance for the, uh, employees and dependents are. Right now, I'm factoring just four percent, just as, as my preliminary estimate, as a increase in our rates, but I don't know until we get that information from risk management. So, if it, if, if that's an agreeable timeline with the board, short answer, beginning of April.
What if?
We start seeing.
What if we, uh, I see if they can schedule it for the last meeting in March? If they could do that, would that suit everybody? What date is that, Ms. Michael?
By the way, there are ten players on the lacrosse team.
Who what?
Asking or not, ten.
And the maxis- mhm, and the maximum roster can be up to thirty, so the schools won't be able to exceed thirty players for a formal roster.
My initial reaction to that, uh, was, I guess I was sort of negative because of the scheduling and the field usage. But, you know, if the board wanted to do that, I think that's all right. I told Greg White, who was a powerful voice far here, and the night that I saw him in Seagull Basketball, he, we talked briefly about it again. But we'll remind the board that, um, uh, we can, I don't care about the expense particularly. If you have girls, you're going to have to offer boys. And if you have boys, you're going to have to offer girls, and which is fine, uh, if, if, if that be the wishes of the board. I also remind you, uh, that, uh, the, the last time that we looked at high school supplements, that this board, and not every member that's on this board now was here at that time, but the last time, which hadn't been that long ago, when we tried to do that, had a committee on it, had a plan, that plan did not pass. And we are going to have to have, I would think, supplements, uh, for, for girls and boys coaches and assistants, I would think. I don't know for sure, but I would think so. And, uh, I'm just, I'm just saying, we walked away from many of our other sports at that time, even though we had a, a plan, a very moderate, modest plan. And it, and it didn't work, according to the board at that time, which was, that's what the board did, and then, and that's, that's where we are. I'm just reminding you of that.
Uh-huh. I can agree with that, too. Well, do, we want to listen to them one day? Okay. I'll see if they can do it in March. If they can't, we'll go from there.
So, the lacrosse games, then, do they have to be played on the football field? If they be, can they be played on the soccer fields?
They can be played on either. Uh, the, now, what I was told about, if you play it on a turf field, they have to line it off with chalk, which washes away, you know, which is not a problem.
We really don't have that many true soccer fields. We don't have many. Uh, I think maybe Riverdale has one.
Riverdale, Blackman, Smyrna, and Rockville.
They have only one.
And that's it. So, you would be increasing the football field traffic, which is pretty well pounded. Speaking on behalf of a high school, they get a lot of use.
Like I say, even if they come in March, we don't have to make a decision on it that night. We can listen and, at least maybe we'll know what it is. Okay, anyone else? Nothing else, we're adjourned.